Good morning, everyone. Welcome to our December 21st, 2021 Board of Commissioners meeting. Our first order of business will please stand and join me to pledge the full whenever you're ready.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. PC 38-21 is a request from Great River Energy for review and approval of a request to relocate a section of station to station electrical transmission line. The relocation areas include portions of Section 5, 7, 8, 15, 16, 17, and 18 of Decoria Township. The proposed route will commence in the southeast quarter of the northeast quarter of Section 5, then progress west along 192nd Street, County State Aid Highway 8, at which point the route turns southerly. After crossing the La Sura River, the route continues south and southeast along County State Aid Highway 8 to the southeast quarter of the southeast quarter of Section 17. At this point, the route continues east along County State Aid Highway 8, crossing the Minnesota State Highway 22 and continuing along County Road 177 to a point where it ends at the southeast corner of the southeast quarter of the southwest quarter of Section 15 Decoria Township, at which point it connects to an existing line. The route includes area zone agricultural and conservation and a crossing that is in the Shoreland Overlay District of La Sura River. Staff presented the report. The applicants were represented. The representative stated that project is needed due to the age of the existing line, which was constructed in the 1940s. The existing line has access to, has access and erosion issues. To better serve Banquo Electric and their customers, the reroute is needed. With the current route, if a line goes down, the area will be without power until it is repaired. With the proposed route, the power can be fed from the opposite direction. He also stated that Great River Energy had conducted a public outreach campaign. Two public citizens addressed the planning commission with the following concerns. One, the safety of the proposed route, changing to County State Aid Highway 90 and then turning south at County State Aid Highway 8 would be a safer route. Two, impact on property values. Three, erosion issues involving the ravine crossing along Township Road 192nd Street. Four, health concerns of the high voltage power lines. Five, damage to trees from cutting below the lines. Six, removal of the existing line and the bluff erosion issues with that line. Seven, potential riverbank failure near the pole associated with the underground gas pipeline. Concern was expressed that it may contain asbestos coated, or may be asbestos coated, and that it may fall into the river with continued riverbank failure. It should be noted that this concern is not associated with the Great River Energy proposal. The chair asked the planning commission members for comments. The members expressed the following comments. One, proper erosion control is needed. Two, the older existing line needs to be replaced. Three, a reliable source of power is needed. And four, construction methods used today are better than when the original line was installed. The chair asked the applicants how they will address the erosion concerns. The applicants stated they will try to limit tree trimming and keep lower vegetation in place. The area of the existing line that will be removed has some unique plants. The work in that area will likely be done during the winter. In addition, due to the height of the poles along 192nd Street at the ravine crossing, it may be possible that some of the trees will remain in place. The planning commission directed staff to work with the applicants to address erosion control issues. Following the discussion, the planning commission forward a recommendation of approval of the request to the county board based on the findings and conditions prepared by staff. On December 8th, 2021, a neighboring residence contacted planning and zoning staff to discuss his concerns regarding this section of line replacement along West Terrace View and the proposed reroute. The resident proposed that using an alternate route from Pole Road westward along County State Aid Highway 90 to County State Aid Highway 8, then proceeding south. The resident expressed the following questions and concerns. One, safety of the new construction crew while replacing the north line along West Terrace View with a nearby charged line. Two, cost savings of starting at the south end substation and route the new line and poles all the way up to Highway 90, then one mile east on 90. The only time without power would be to make the connection across 90 to Pole Road. Three, would there not be a cost savings by bringing power up from the south if the line is de-energized during the replacement? Four, County State Highway 90 route would be easier to construct since the construction is not around the existing system and would be a safer route since there are no nearby dwellings. And five, avoiding the 192nd Street route will remove the ravine crossing. This would also address the potential erosion issues of the ravine crossing. Great River Energy responded to the questions and concerns of the resident. In summary, Great River Energy indicated that the safety is a key performance indicator of their company for the workers and nearby residents. Efforts are in place to minimize all planned power outages. The County State Aid Highway 90 route would be an easier route to construct and would be safer without nearby dwellings. However, County State Aid Highway 90 has higher volume and rate of speed than the proposed route. In addition, access to damaged poles along County State Aid Highway 90 will present a safety issue for the work crews versus gaining access from a narrower township road and right-of-way. Regarding the erosion concerns and ravine crossings along 192nd Street, Great River Energy is reviewing engineering and vegetation options to minimize the potential erosion concerns. On December 14th, 2021, the erosion issues were discussed with representatives of Great River Energy. For the proposed crossing of the ravine system along 192nd Street, Great River Energy proposes to place the poles as close to the right-of-way as possible and possibly place them within the right-of-way. In addition, the insulators would be placed on the south side of the poles. Doing so could possibly eliminate approximately 10 feet of tree removal on the north side of the poles compared to a typical design. In addition, it may be possible to add to the pole height to minimize tree clearing. Great River Energy's indicated trees will need to be removed. However, the root balls will remain undisturbed. Trees could initially be topped, allowing new vegetation to establish underneath. Once lower vegetation is established, the original trees would likely be removed. Great River Energy works with reputable contractors to follow the plan as marked on site for the vegetation removal. The conclusion was to add a condition requiring approval of a stormwater pollution prevention plan prior to the commencement of the construction. The board action is a resolution.
All right. Thank you, George. At this time, the applicant is present. Good morning, Dale. Do you have any comments at this time?
Good morning, Mr. Chair Commissioners. My name is Dale Alke. I'm a senior field representative for Great River Energy. I appreciate the report given by staff this morning. I guess the only quick clarification I would like to reference other on the report there would be the comment made that 90 would be an easier route to construct and safer without nearby dwellings. Yes, there are no dwellings along Highway 90, but the access to get in and out of the Highway 90, depending upon conditions, would actually not be a safer construction route. Where we're coming across on Westview Terrace, where it was referenced, it has lower, shallower ditches for vehicles, for the larger construction vehicles to get in and out of that area versus along County State Aid Highway 90, which has steeper, steeper ditches that drop off, which during construction, a little more difficult to access, and then in times of repair or emergency restoration, to get those vehicles generally in climate weathers down there can be certainly a hazard. And that's just a slight clarification there. Other than that, I would certainly be open. We, as also, as I was going to say, as we have mentioned here with staff, that we certainly will, when we retire the old line, we'll certainly work with Mr. Brown and his concerns there to try to mitigate what we can in the erosion areas that have begun on his property.
Okay. Thank you. All right. At this time, I will open it up for public comment. Anybody wishing to comment on the Great River Energy application, PC 38-21, please come to the podium, state your name and address for the record. Keep your comments to approximately three minutes, and we'll hear your testimony.
Good morning. My name is Gene Brom.
Good morning, Gene.
My address is 1021 Madison Avenue in Mankato. My property is the property that is the, one of the major reasons why they're moving that line is because of the erosion that's there and the access. There is an easement across my property, but because of the size of the poles are so much bigger now, it's very difficult to get that equipment down the farm road that's there. So there is another road that has been used. Great River Energy is aware of that. They actually have fixed that road. They don't have an easement across that property. I do have an easement across that property. If there are concerns about the current landowner not allowing that, it's going to make it a little more difficult. The reason why I'm here today is, I'm nervous as to tickens. I apologize.
It's all right.
I worked with Great River Energy multiple times. I've reached out to them. I started this process. We've worked together multiple times in the past. And all I'm here because I want to make sure that those poles are removed. There are a couple Dale and I had spoke this morning about it. There's a couple of poles that were difficult for them to get out. They're cut off. They're there. They're very close to the erosion process. They're just within a couple of feet. And the concern that I have is, once they're there, it's difficult to get rid of them. I can't take them to the landfill. So I just want to make sure that the poles are not cut off, the poles are removed that are there and taken away. And I would also like to make sure that there is some kind of a discussion about the erosion that's there. I know there's some disagreement on what caused the erosion of what's there, but there is erosion there. The La Sura County gets a lot, La Sura River gets a lot of flack because of the silt that's in it. And as a property owner, I take pride in that. And I just ask that you will pass this. It's a great idea to do, that you just make sure that there's some kind of a way that we can work together. It doesn't have to affect the county's budget, doesn't have to affect the county staff. Just the fact that the two of us, the landowner and the group, can work together and come up with a solution. There is one line in there that said, you know, that I don't believe that you're going to stop erosion. I truly don't believe. And I don't, so with that being said, I think there's all kinds of plans that are available to at least limit the erosion that's going to eventually go into the river. Those are my comments.
Thank you, Gene. Thank you very much. Anyone else wishing to comment on PC 38-21? Please come to the podium, state your name and address for the record. And last time, anyone wishing to comment on PC 38-21 for Great River Energy, please come to the podium. Or if you're online, please unmute your phone or computer and we will hear your testimony. Okay. Hearing no more public comment, I will close the public comment portion of the meeting and bring it back to the county board for action.
Mr. Chair, I'll move the resolution or the...
Okay. I have a first, I have a second.
Second.
Got a first and a second for the Great River Energy permit. And any questions or comments from the staff or the applicant at this time?
I'm sure that they'll be able to work together, the Gene and then Dale, with Great Energy, assuming they can handle any of the issues that Gene brought up, or work to work with. So, I'm happy to satisfy.
We will, we had a lot of discussion about this at the planning and zoning meeting, and Dale was there, Gene was there, and there's some other constituencies there. And we really struggled with trying to find a way to add a condition to make that happen. But after a lot of discussion, I think it was just agreed upon that we would just keep this dialogue going between Dale and the landowners. And we have done that so far. And George and I, Dale and Marcia, and one other person you had online, Molly, had had a good conversation about some of the stuff that they would help with the private landowners. And I think we came to an agreement that it is going to be very difficult to add a condition and to make that happen. But this will be a good faith effort of Great River Energy and the landowner. But we've had the conversation at this level. So if Gene isn't getting some, or any landowner isn't getting some sort of action, we certainly acknowledge it. We know what's going on with it, and we will be in touch with you and to try to help things along as this moves forward. Because it is very frustrating as a landowner when you work with a larger company like that, that, you know, you get your permit and then you're gone. So, and I know we are going to be approving some of this stuff through our county engineer, which gives me a little more security, because I know our engineer will have interest in it. And again, it's, that's our local level. So, we did spend a lot of time talking about this at planning and zoning, but the line is needed. And we will just have to put our faith in the fact that the Great River Energy will follow through with their stuff and help landowners like Gene with some of these erosion issues. So with that, is there any other comments? If not, I have a motion and a second for the PC 38-21. All in favor, say aye. All opposed, the motion carries. Thank you, everyone, for your time. Thank you, Gene, for coming. We appreciate it. Got another item on our agenda here?
Yes, the next item is PC 39-21. The applicant is Custom Craft Homes LLC. The request is a review and approval of the final plat of Dogwood Edition and a revised preliminary plat for Dogwood Edition to change the name from Olson Edition, which was approved back in August. There's no increase in the number of resident... There's no increase in the number of residential lots being proposed. There's currently 10 in that plat, and they'll be a total of 10. The plat moves two of the lots from the north side of the road to the south side, and then they're also installing stormwater infrastructure that complies with the state rules, and it's been reviewed by the City of Mankato as part of the MS4. South Bend Township has also agreed to take over the stormwater infrastructure as part of the MS4 program for maintenance, and the project is located in the northwest quarter of Section 22, South Bend Township. At the Planning Commission meeting, staff presented the report. The applicants were present and had no additional comments. There was no public comment either. The chair asked the Planning Commission for comments from the Planning Commission, and members indicated no concerns with the proposal. And following a brief discussion, the Planning Commission voted to forward a recommendation for approval to the County Board with the findings and conditions prepared by staff in the staff report. The board action is a resolution.
All right. Thank you, Scott. At this time, the applicant is not present. Don't think they're on the phone, okay? Anyone wishing to comment on PC 3921, Custom Craft Home LLC, please come to the podium, state your name and address for the record. If you're calling in on the phone or via computer, please unmute your phone, and we will hear your testimony at this time. Anyone wishing to comment on PC 3921? Anyone wishing to comment on PC 3921, Custom Craft Home LLC? Seeing no public comment, I will close the public portion of the meeting and bring it back to the County Board for action.
Move to approve.
Do I have a first, do I have a second?
Second.
Got a first and a second for PC 3921. Any questions or comments from the board?
The only thing is, you know, to get this straight, the city of Mankato was, was involved with this, are they providing water and sewer, or what's, what's?
No, they're not providing water and sewer. This will be served by private wells in a septic system. The city of Mankato is a part of the regional MS4, reviewed the stormwater plan, and they have a contract with South Bend Township to review plans and perform inspections on maintenance of stormwater, so South Bend Township reached out to Mankato.
Okay. So that's the only reason they were involved?
Correct.
All right. That's all I have.
Yeah, and the addition to this was adding the, the property will be controlled, the water will be controlled by South Bend Township and that, before it was going to be controlled by the landowners, and that always is more problematic. So, Planning Commission was pretty confident that this is the best way to go, so. Any other questions or comments? Hearing none, I have a motion and a second for Custom Craft Home LLC, PC 3921. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, the motion carries. Thank you, gentlemen. Have a great Christmas. All right. Our next item on the dit, on the agenda is a ditch 33 petition for improvement. Good morning, Craig.
Good morning, Craig. A petition for improvement was received by Property and Environmental Resources Staff on December 6, 2021, for Blue Earth County Judicial Ditch 33. Attorney Kurt Dieter of Rinkin Noonan reviewed the petition and found it to be adequate. Judicial Ditch 33 resides in Section 22, 23, 26, and 27 McPherson Township, Blue Earth County, Minnesota. Judicial Ditch 33 is a public drainage system with approximately a watershed of 896 acres established in 1918. We're here before the Drainage Authority requesting the approval of findings and orders accepting the petition and appointing Engineer Chuck J. Brandl of INS Group to prepare a preliminary survey report for the Drainage Authority in accordance with Minnesota Statute 103E.
All right. Thank you, Craig. Do I have a motion to appoint Chuck as the engineer?
Second.
Got a first and a second. Any discussion, questions, or comments? Pretty straightforward, process is just getting rolling. Hearing no questions, all in favor of the petition, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, the motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, Craig. Have a good Christmas. Human Services, Mr. Phil Clausen, good morning.
Good morning, everybody.
Good morning.
How's Phil today?
I think I'm pretty good.
Yeah. Questionable some days, isn't it?
Yeah, there's some survival mode going on, there's no doubt about that, but a lot to be grateful for, that's for sure. Well, Mr. Chair, Commissioners, I have a number of action items, which is usually the case at the end of the year, and so I will try to move through those quickly, and if there's any information you all would like from me, please either stop me, or I'm willing to go into as much detail as you desire. The first section of action items, financial assistance, and the first two items are very similar, so I'll take those together. Both transportation contracts with patron companies and Americare Mobility Van. They are both providers who use or offer transportation and medical assistance, clientele, and also fee-for-service clients, so people that aren't on medical assistance but can pay through either their health plan or privately. The rates for these services are set by the state in both contracts, and the rates have not changed since the prior year. The term of both contracts, January 1 of '22 through December 31 of '22. Similar method for the next two items, both interpreting contracts, the first one with Lingua One and the second with South Sudanese Community of Minnesota, SSCMN. The interpreting services include help with applications and forms, and also assistance with the interview process to understand the programs we administer, which sometimes is difficult for everyone, to be honest, so a lot of help there that we can offer. This contract for Lingua One has not been adjusted since 2018, so it's been quite a while, and so we did go through and look at each line item as far as increases. You'll see the one-hour session increased by $2, two-hour sessions by $1. And then we have what we call virtual connections, which increased by 50 cents per minute, and the sign language one is more significant, which is actually a very hard-to-come-by-service at times and usually pretty costly, so it went from $105 per two-hour time period to $125 per two-hour time period, and I'm aware that that is a minimum, so if you have somebody to come interpret, it's a two-hour block that they get paid, so. And then a couple others that there were no changes that are listed. South Sudanese Community of Minnesota, exactly the same content, and they were willing to mirror all the terms that I just read, and the term of both contracts, January 1 of '22 through December 31 of '23, so a two-year contract in both of those. Section is Public Health. The first one is a smaller grant that we received, but important for early hearing detection, birth defects. Any children are born with such needs, and they don't seem to have the follow-up services, either flagged by doctor, family, schools, that we would be able to come in and help them get the extended services they need. The goal is really preparedness for kindergarten. There were no changes to the reimbursement of the state, and that's structured at $75 per plan update, $225 for a non-face-to-face assessment, and $400 for face-to-face. The term of this contract, January 1 of '22 through December 31 of '26, so a large block of time. Next two items under Public Health are pretty significant in terms of resource for us and COVID-related. The first one, Public Health Emergency Preparedness from MDH, FEP, as we often refer to it, and specific to Workforce Development Grant, and this is activities of sport and expand our workforce regarding the COVID-19 pandemic, but this is also partnering with other supports in the community, vaccinators, community coordination efforts, and so there is some scope that we can look at with regard to those funds. And we also can look at some of the disease rates and some of the trending that we have through these resources. The amount of the grant, $158,400, term November 15, '21 through June 30 of '23. And then also significantly for COVID, the next item, MDH, Public Health Emergency Preparedness again, but this one entitled COVID-19 Grant. We've had this one before with a similar amount of funding, over $400,000. It supports activities needed for our response. This is more direct service-oriented, vaccine efforts, testing, essential services, and recovery efforts. The amount of the grant is $436,173, and the term, April 1 of '21 through December 31 of '23, and that's because we've had, this is an extension of the previous contract. Child support, one item, our cooperative agreement, this is with Department of Health for the Child Support Division, and it enables us to provide our child support enforcement programs. We work closely with Patton, his office, in this regard. It's required by federal law that we must have this agreement in place for every quarter federal money is claimed by the county, and there is a statutory reference, the Social Security Act. It is a renewal grant, and no fiscal terms are included in the agreement. The term is January 1 of '22 through December 31 of '23. Disability Services, MRCI, Extended Employment and Adult Day Care. The Extended Employment Services really offer an alternative to the waivers, which we end up talking about quite a bit with the board, so this extended employment rate gives individuals an option. We do, we do request an increase of 2% for both 2022 and '23, 171, 62, and 175, 05, respectively, for each year. The program is relatively small but important, serving about 20 individuals, and prior to this request of 2%, there has not been increases in the past recently. The Adult Day Care, to you, Mr. Chair, and also maybe in a transition, we, the state rate management system does determine the amount for adult daycare services, and they have not sent us that rate yet, so even though I'm bringing it as an action item, I would like to hold it until we get the rates, just so we can include those for signature, so there might be some delay on this one. The rate is based on a 1 to 5 ratio, staff to clients. The rates are set by the state, and they remain flat, but we need to get those confirmed from the state. The term is January 1 of '22 through December 31 of '23. The next two items I will take together, and those are, again, transportation contracts, in this case, providing services to our waiver clients. They're referred to as common carrier contracts and fulfills a community expectation from the state. Rates are set to mirror the managed care and medical assistance rate, and then that's how we get to what they define as market rates. The term of the contract is January 1 of '22 through December 31 of '23. The next contract is similar in scope, volunteer transportation, but some different content in that it serves specifically seniors and some of our social service clients through Vine. Same type of service, and the rates again are set by Humans, by Department of Human Services in this case. It's been flat for many years, and it is at 16.1 cents per mile, not to exceed $57,024 annually. The term, January 1 of '22 through December 31 of '23. Okay, rolling along. I keep looking, turning pages, there's a lot. These next six, though, I will try to take together unless board again has any specific questions. They're all very similar. I'll read the providers to make sure that we are, of course, looking at each of our providers individually. Alternative Resolutions, Ethical Solutions, Lutheran Social Services, Breka Care, Guardianship Services, and Wing Guardianship Services. Each of them, if you look through the content, there are some variance in the rates, so that's important for the board to see, but they are for Guardianship and Conservatorship Services, which is our statutory responsibility. It really is a protection service to eligible, vulnerable adults, so when we have those, they're offered either Guardianship or Conservatorship, depending on the presenting needs. And then you'll see the rates are consistent in each of these contracts, 2% for both 2022 and 2023. The terms are also mirrored off of each other, January 1 of '22 through December 31 of '23. So that's true for the next six items. If the board would have any questions, you'll see some slight variance in rates, but they hold together fairly well.
See, they're all 2%.
Right. The next section is South Central Community-Based Initiative. This is our joint powers board that oversees our Adult Mental Health Initiative. This agreement is specific to those adult mental health dollars, and they provide, in the middle of the narrative, mental health case management services, psychotherapy, social and rec supports, including our clubhouse in Blue Earth County, also providing funding for our Mental Health Center for Psychiatric Medication Management, which we all know is critical service, and we serve the 10-county region in that regard. Three main categories in this, large contract, staffing, clubhouse, and psychiatry. The staffing and clubhouse have remained flat at $938,744 for the staffing and $20,000 for clubhouse supports. Psychiatric medication management has increased slightly at $535, totaling $55769 for this year's allocation. The term, January of '22 through December 31 of '22. Children and Family Services, one item, Greater Minnesota Family Services, Family Group Decision Making. This is a really important service that we have had and has evolved over time, where we include families in the planning process, and that includes relative searches for extended families who might be able to help children in need within their own family. We are obviously trying to follow the statutory requirements regarding permanency. We have a timeframe where we need to have a child in a stable environment, and the courts provide us the accountability in that regard. We serve primarily Child Protection, Community Corrections, and Children's Mental Health through Family Group Decision Making Services. There is a facilitator, the families come in and we all talk about what the plan might be, and so we found this to be a very important, critical way to approach some of our work in that regard. There has been some structure change in this contract. Prior, there were like kind of flat fees, and there were partner counties that were involved. It was more complicated. What we're requesting from the board is a per-session rate of $1,330 per intervention. 40% of that would be paid kind of upfront, because there is a lot of preparatory work that's done, and if the family or the situation of the court changes the circumstances, sometimes we don't complete the whole process, and we wanted the vendor to get paid something, so 40%, 60% split, and then the 60% paid upon completion of the meetings and satisfactory post-intervention completion. The term, January 1 of '22 through December 31 of '22. And there are other counties that are signing this exact contract in our region. Substance Use Disorder, a couple of items that are known to us in history, the first one with Brown County Evaluation Center. We have a strong relationship with our primary provider in Brown County. We obviously have a statutory mandate to serve people detained by law enforcement within our jurisdiction and need detoxification services, so this is that unique detox issue where regardless of where they're from, we pay, and that's true in other counties as well. The vendor, Brown County Evaluation Center, offers us priority bed space and a rate reduction for being a partner county. Our per diem rate will increase just slightly by $4 from '21 to '22, less than 1%, and the term, January of '22 through December 31 of '22. And a complimentary contract from Mankato Department of Public Safety, providing transportation to detox when that is necessary for people within the city of Mankato. We've had this contract in place for many years. It is a renewal. There is a significant increase. They rebase the cost for their... They rebase the cost for their staffing, and so the increase went from $80.86 per hour to $91.92 per hour, and that represents a 13.69% increase. Mileage is also part of the contract, and at this point, it's 56 cents a mile based on the IRS rate. The term, January 1st of '22 through December 31st of '22. Light at the end of the tunnel. Administration. This one is important for the Commissioners just to look at. There's an attachment in this regard, looking at our Advisory Committee and Task Force Appointments, which is obviously very important to us. The people volunteering are certainly appreciated. The individuals participating in the Human Service Advisory Committee or the other task force are listed on the attachment, and you'll also see the districts where they reside in your districts and which committee they're asking to be part of. There is also a second attachment, which really isn't an action item, but it shows remaining district vacancies for the Board's information. I am requesting formal appointment to these committees as represented in that first attachment, and those are my action items for today.
Thank you very much, Phil.
Thank you.
That was a lot of stuff.
Yeah, that's a lot.
It's the year-end stuff.
That's right.
Get these contracts in place so we can help our citizens in Blue Earth County. Those are all the action items. Are there a motion?
No move.
Second. Got a motion and a second for action items. Any questions that didn't, that came up while Phil was making his presentation?
I guess some of us have to...
I'm pretty impressed. End of the year stuff for, for you is huge, and I, I sure appreciate that. Appreciate all the, your staff does. They do an amazing job for Blue Earth County and its residents, so thank you very much.
Thank you, Commissioner. That means a lot to me and to them as well.
Appreciate it.
And we know it's very sincere from you all, we really do, because we've been tested on the night for quite a while here, so we appreciate the support. We really do feel it.
All right, there's no other comments. I have a motion and a second for the action items. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Got some informational items.
Yes, we do. So, Mr. Chair, Commissioner, just a couple of information items. I knew my action items were kind of long-winded, so I, these are hopefully going to be fairly short, but any discussion, discussion you desire, I'm all for that. The first one is just the Yellow Line Project, just quick updates on that. I know the paper did a, a thing on our NAMI award, but I did want to bring it just to show you in hard terms that we got the NAMI award. It's nice to be aligned with the advocates. You know, it's hard to sometimes always find perfect common ground, and usually that's because we don't have enough resources to fit every need, you know, under the sun all the time, and so there's cracks that form. But in this case, NAMI's been very supportive of us, as well as, as the Board has with Yellow Line, so I appreciate that, and I just wanted to bring it.
Could you explain to the public what NAMI stands for?
Absolutely. So it's National Alliance, I might have had to look that up, Commissioner, but National Alliance on Mental Illness is what NAMI stands for, and they are...
They do a lot for secure, for, for mentally ill people across the state of Minnesota, and, and obviously nationally, too.
Right.
But I think it's, when you have those acronyms, people say, what's NAMI?
Thank you, yes.
And that's, that makes a big difference in what this means and what Blue Earth County is doing for our citizens. I think it's huge.
Thank you. I appreciate that, and yes, I'm one of those Taco Blue Streak type of people, so thank you for slowing that down. It's very important, our partnership with, with NAMI, who NAMI is, and, and finding common ground like this is, is really special.
Well, you know, both me and you have a personal thing for, with NAMI.
Absolutely.
So I think that makes a big difference for us, so we understand it, but most people don't.
That's right. And yeah, sometimes I get in the blur, Commissioner, and I have a hard time remembering that we need to slow down and make sure we're connecting dots, so I, I very much appreciate that because it does mean a lot to us. Thank you. Thank you very much. Also regarding Yellow Line, just some mentor sites. I know as the Board gets around, both locally and statewide and then nationally, we have had some contact, consistent contact with Cheyenne, Wyoming, just as a mentor site talking about their project and our project, which, you know, they're always similar and different, is how I describe them, that everybody has unique nuance in how they do things. But it sharpens us, too. It's, it's beneficial to share our story, but boy, it's nice to hear what people are doing around the country as well. And then I task it County, Minnesota. Since I even started putting my board report together, New Mexico, there's jurisdiction out of New Mexico and Georgia that are both also engaging. And so it's just really nice. The virtual realities have made this really efficient, you know, not having everybody and their brother travel and come see, and we're able to cover a lot of ground by, by using virtual mediums. And so really nice to, again, sharpen off of other jurisdictions. And then I couldn't let a board meeting go by without at least bringing up the COVID issue and trying to give you some perspective from more of the trenches level, the operations level regarding both COVID and our public health response. Obviously, the Omicron variant is a big issue and how that'll play out. I think, you know, generally, we were pleased that it wasn't going to be a more severe presentation, and so far, I think that has been true. We did do a booster clinic last week for first responders, and then Blue Earth County staff were also invited to get their booster through us if they desired. There are a lot of resources for boosters. I don't have this in my notes, but I know testing has been a little more difficult, and some of that, you know, obviously with some of the federal stuff out there about tested weekly, you know, keeping up with that volume and being able to do that logistically is actually quite difficult. So there's, there's a concern about the testing part of this as we go forward. And let's see, I, I have talked to Bob a bunch of times about our staff, for whatever reason, and it's really hard to trace things anymore with the schools, but we've just gotten pounded in with COVID and then other illnesses, too. And, and you know, that becomes more personal when it's your own team, and people are out of work, and their families are affected. We've had some more severe situations of late, and so it's that whole thing of it becomes more real when it strikes you more personally, and, and our staff have certainly experienced some of that. Kelly did provide me some statistical information, and it does sound like, you know, I think it was month over month, but some of the trending is actually going the right way, so there's hope statistically. That's when I've talked about, about this, it's like, I wish we had more facts because it feels like it's out of hand, but I don't know if, you know, you don't want to jump to any conclusions about what we're really facing. So if overall in Minnesota things are getting better, that would be a good thing. The hospital's being full still, that's a fact, so that's a piece that we'll also be able to measure as far as overall need and how it's surfacing. Essential service for us, wraparound services when somebody has a need. Usually, these are people that either are homeless or not, you know, stably housed or in congregate settings, and they need wraparound services. They can't get food, they have COVID. We come in and try to provide them their daily needs and work either with a provider that's in place or find them shelter and wrap supports around. Kelly said last week we had five of those, and as you can imagine, they're kind of 24/7 need, so it's high need when we do have an essential service case pop up. So we spend a lot of our time in that area. Just looking to the future, ongoing training, you know, you don't think about this stuff, but training for new healthcare staff as they come on, you know, they, it's new to all of us. We've learned something along the way, and we want to try to capture that and make sure we use that for the future, so that's a priority. The workforce concerns, which I know you have all heard about at every level, continue to be there, especially for those more technical healthcare workers, but really across the board. It's very competitive at lower areas of practical service jobs as well. And then another priority for the future is just community networking and finding our communication efficiencies, our smart alignments, and more than anything, trying to say, what are, what are each of the partner agencies in town through our coalition really good at? And so like Open Door, rather than us doing some of the vaccination clinics, you know, for an example, they seem to be more prepared for doing that. They have been doing that. Their funding is being cut, so we're thinking we'd like to try to support them to continue to be specialists in that area, and we help fund them or support them with staff rather than duplicate that or everybody do small fragments. So there's a lot of strategies around those things, and it is literally a daily basis where things shift again, and we kind of adjust, so.
Been here in our region. One of the counties had two or three of the staff that are going to resign because they're not going to get vaccinated, and so it could shut down one small site till we hire more staff, which we all know is a challenge to hire staff.
Absolutely.
And then this is just another layer for them to have to deal with. And then even with the testing, it'd be fine and dandy if everybody came in on Monday morning, did the test and showed us the test, and seven days later, we do it again, but they're going to be coming in and, and even only 20 or 30 staff, that's going to be an accounting program that's not built yet and trying to keep track of it. So when you start having staff that don't want to be vaccinated and are going to prove with a test, and if you start getting 30, 40, 50 of them, you have to manage that also, and that just gets to be another challenge.
That's exactly what I meant, Commissioner, yeah, that I think that you extrapolate that. And, you know, I know all of you or know of you enough to know that work ethic has always been a strength of ours and like the heart for our mission. I, I don't think anybody works in Human Services that doesn't want to do the work, but these logistics, those structural things that come up and bite you, like when a young family, and you know, we're, we're in a different place developmentally with our family, but you see, you have three young kids at home, and their daycare goes down, and they can't go to work. And it's just these, it's just a dead stopper, like on a given day, stop the train, and it's so impactful, and, and it's, it's such a hardship, really. And it takes a long time to recover from that because you might be out for days, not a day. A day is one thing, but a week or 10 days, that's a different challenge. And so I feel for, for that ripple effect, and then the logistics, how it bites us like you're describing.
And the families that don't have other support, you know, other family members. You have a small, young family that's here with no grandparents or anything local, close, and don't have a relationship with other people you can trust your kids with. It is just another, another, another item that's affecting the workforce.
Yes.
You just barely get to work, and you get somebody hired, and then they're yelped because their kid's homesick, and they can't find someone else to deal with it. So unfortunately, it's just challenges we're going to have to learn to deal with.
Yeah, no magic wand, that's for sure. That's for sure.
So, well, we appreciate all your staff's hard work and effort.
Thank you very much, all of you, and certainly support them any way we can.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Hope they all have a great Christmas.
Merry Christmas to all of you as well.
Any other questions for Phil or comments? Thank you very much, Phil.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, Phil.
Great report.
Thank you.
All right, does anybody want to take a break, or should we follow into administrative right away?
I think we can go ahead.
All right. Let's move right down to administrative. Bob?
All right, Mr. Chair and Commissioners, first item is the County Board Minutes for December 14th.
I'll move the minutes. Number 23.
Okay, you got a motion and a second for the minutes. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries.
Next are the bills for the week of December 9th.
No moves?
Second.
Okay, you got a motion and a second for the bills. Any questions or comments that haven't been answered already?
Got a couple.
Okay.
It's just basically comments. Mathwoods Construction, $1,117,000. I'm thinking County Road 1, but I could be wrong.
It's mostly County Road 1. There is a little bit of County Road 27 as well.
All right. And then Minoa, construction, Minoa, construction, $210,000.
That is CASA 41.
Okay. Costs a lot of money to keep the county running.
And a portion of CASA 7 as well.
All right. Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay. Got a motion and a second to pay the bills. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries.
Well, Mr. Chair and Commissioners, item number six in your packet is the Human Resources Department Agenda. Do have one action item for the Board's consideration today, and that is the approval of abandoned grade placement of some revised positions within the Public Works Department in the Highway Unit. The Board may recall, and there is a memo in the packet as well, you may recall that there was a memorandum of understanding with the International Union of Operating Engineers, our local 49 that represents our highway workers, that was implemented at the end of 2020, that would have the county kind of review job descriptions, revise those job descriptions to address some work assignment responsibilities and address maybe some safety issues that were raised by the union, and to have then our independent consultant review those job descriptions for possible adjustment in the classification. We did embark on that process throughout the course of this year and redesigned some of those job descriptions in a way that would allow us to break up the responsibilities, getting away from kind of the focus on the equipment operated by the different employee groups, but rather focus on those job responsibilities as well as the assignment of... The course of revising those job descriptions, we did come up with a proposed structure of a Maintenance Technician 1, 2, and 3, 3 being the highest in terms of responsibilities and pay. Along with those job descriptions, then, when the independent consultant reviewed those, there was abandoned grade adjustment for the Maintenance Technician 2 and 3, basically replacing our Medium Equipment Operator and Heavy Equipment Operator, but then the creation of the new Maintenance Technician 1 level, basically comes in at where old Medium Equipment Operators were. The Tech 2 would be where the previous classification for the Heavy would be, and then the Technician 3 was one step above that. You'll see the breakdown in the chart at the bottom of the memo indicating kind of how we anticipate the shakeout in terms of the assignment. The process going forward will require us to post these opportunities, have people apply for at least the Maintenance Technician 3 position, probably the 2 as well, and so the leadership at the Public Works Department will be going through that, assuming the Board's approval here today.
All right, thank you, Bob, for that update.
I would move to approve.
Second.
Okay. You got a motion and a second for the abandoned grade placement for the Public Works. Any discussion, questions, or comments?
Any estimated timeline on that next process?
We hope to start that interview process in January. We've met twice with the business agent and the stewards on this proposal. They asked the same question, so again, with approval here from the Board today, Ryan, I believe, will start that process early in January and try and keep it moving forward because we know there's a lot of interest within the workforce to see this implemented as quickly as possible.
Yeah, it was a long process, but it went through the proper channels. Any other discussion or questions? Okay, you got a motion and a second for the Public Works Department. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries.
Then just a couple of informational items for the Board today. We did have a resignation of a correctional officer in our jail, and so we've initiated recruitment to refill that position, and then we filled a library clerk-on-call position, so we're moving ahead with that. Any other questions on the Human Resources Department agenda? Nope. All right, I have number seven in your packet then is a resolution regarding the 2022 levy. Minnesota statute does require the county administrator to bring forward a proposed property tax levy. As you're aware, we began working on the budget in April of this year. We've had meetings with department head in June, and then worked with the County Board throughout the summer, resulting in a proposed levy of $40,546,394. This proposed levy is a 2.5% increase over the levy that was assessed last year, and so I recommend the 2022 property tax levy of $40,546,394 be certified to the Blue Earth County Finance Director.
Got a motion?
Still moved.
I'll second it.
Got a motion and a second for the levy of $40,546,46394. Any discussion?
Only that this has been a very long process. People don't understand, we actually started working on this probably before summer starts, you know, to get this point. So, a lot of things go through the process, a lot of work sessions before we come to this area. So, this is well thought of.
Thank you, Commissioner, very true.
And we continually try to, you know, make sure we obviously have the resources for all our areas, that county government, that I think we're doing a reasonable and a, I don't know how to use the word, frugal, but...
Efficient.
Efficient.
The best value for our money.
Yep.
All right, there's no other comments. I got a motion and a second for the levy. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries.
Mr. Chair and Commissioners, item number 8 in the packet is the 2022 Budget. Minnesota statute 375A.06 does require the county administrator to prepare and submit an annual budget and long-range capital expenditure program to the county board. As I mentioned previously, we've been working on this budget since April of this year, and it's been reviewed a number of times, both by staff and the county board. As such, I'm recommending approval of the resolution regarding the 2022 proposed budget, which projects expenditures at $105,783,455.
I would move to approve.
Second?
Second.
Okay, I got a motion and a second for the 22 budget. Questions, comments?
It reflects our values, I guess, and what we're looking for.
Already stated by Bob that it was a long process, along with the levy. So, if there's no questions or comments, I got a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries for the budget.
Item number 9 in your packet is a memo regarding salary adjustments. Our practice has generally been to approve a general wage adjustment for all non-union employees, supervisors, department heads, and elected officials that are the same as negotiated with our labor unions. We are still in the process of settling some of those labor agreements, but for 2022, staff are proposing a flat dollar increase of $1.50 per hour for all non-union employees. Also, I would point out that the proposed county commissioner's salary for 2022 will be $42,765. Seeking board approval of these wage adjustments.
Motion for the wage adjustments.
Will do approve.
Got a first and a second?
Second.
Any discussion, questions, comments? Another long process to get to the $1.50 per hour, and then also a little different process going from a percentage to a dollar per hour fee. So, took Bob and the staff some time in negotiations to get some of that done, but I think it should be a good process.
I don't know if people understand the difficulty local governments have working with wages and stuff and competing with private enterprise in keeping our employees and keeping our prime employees and trying, so they don't move on because of a dollar or two.
Yeah.
And, you know, there's a lot of, you know, and that's all local government. That's county, city, and it doesn't matter what county or city you're in. And because private enterprise understands that wages are going up, and our employees are looking at that a lot. So, we have to work to keep our employees, and I keep on saying, we have some of the best employees in the United States here in Blue Earth County. So, I appreciate the work that Bob and his staff have done doing this.
I will tell the board that it was a different conversation with their unions this year going to this flat dollar increase. I've been with the county now 33 years, first time I've seen it where we've gone to this flat dollar increase. So, it was a learning curve for our employees to fully understand the implications of that. I would say our unions were very clear that they don't want to continue that well into the future, but they were agreeable, for the most part, to it for a couple of years to, again, bring up kind of our lower classification levels to better represent the market that we're seeing today.
Well, to do business differently is always difficult. Change is hard to undertake, especially as we get older. So, you know, good job on the staff and the unions for negotiating that.
Absolutely.
That way, we can pass on to the non-union.
It's a cooperative measure, so.
Yep. It set the stage for all of this. It's a little different, but it set the stage for this, so. All right, I got a motion and a second for the salary adjustments. If there's no other comments, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries.
Item number 10 in your packet is a memo regarding the 2022 per diem rate. Each year, the county board establishes the per diem rate and the various boards and commissions that are eligible for the per diems. The current per diems are set at $100 per day with a $60 half-day fee or $100 for a full day, recommending that we maintain those rates for 2022.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? Pretty straightforward, same as last year, so. If there's no discussion, all in favor of the per diem rates, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries.
Item number 11 in the packet is a memo regarding tobacco licenses effective January 1st, 2022 through December 31st of that year. All of the applicants listed have completed the required paperwork and submitted the license fee, and so, we're recommending approval of these tobacco licenses.
I would move to approve.
Second.
Got a first and a second for the tobacco license. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries for the tobacco license.
Item number 12 in the packet is a memo regarding the Electronic Funds Transfer Authority. Minnesota statute 471.38 requires that the governing body shall annually delegate the authority to make electronic fund transfers. Requires it be delegated to the chief financial officer or the officers designee. We're recommending, once again this year, that this delegation be provided to the finance director and the assistant finance director to make those electronic fund transfers.
Okay, a motion for the authority for the electronic funds?
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries for the Electronic Funds Transfer Authority.
Mr. Chair and Commissioners, item number 13 in the packet is information regarding our jail food contract. This is an amendment to our existing contract with Eleo or Doing Business as Summit Food Services. They provide and have provided for a number of years food service to the jail. The cost is negotiated each year by reviewing the food away from home consumer price index, and that increase is set at 4.7%. So, as I'm sure the board is aware, we're seeing cost of goods and services going up, and that's certainly reflective in this particular contract amendment. So, we're recommending this amendment be approved, and it is effective December 1st of this year.
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion and a second for the jail food contract amendment. Any discussion, questions?
Personally surprised it's that low. Knowing the cost of food and how it's risen, I know our trips to the grocery store seem to be a lot more than 4.7% higher. So, thanks for negotiating that contract.
It is higher, yeah, grocery store, 4.7, yeah.
These guys do a good job for us.
Yeah, they do, they do.
All right, I got a motion and a second. Any discussion? If there's no more discussion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries for the jail food contract amendment. All right, Bob, that looks like we've plowed through all of our stuff other than the committee reports.
That's all I have, Mr. Chair.
All right. This time, we'll move into committee reports. Vance, I think all this go from left to right today.
I, since we, it's been a total week since we had our last board meeting.
Yeah, whole week.
We don't have too much, but after our last board meeting, we had a holiday get-together and our truth in taxation in the evening. And then, on Thursday, I had TDS board meeting and a community farm discussion with Josh and Laura Peterson, and the community farm seems to be going very, very well, and we're looking forward to next year.
Good, exciting.
That's the end of my report.
Thank you, Commissioner. Kevin?
In addition to the things we all did, on Friday, I was at Fillmore, Freeborn County for the sewer watershed, one watershed, one plan policy committee meeting. Was the only meeting attended that ends my report.
Thank you, Commissioner. Mark?
Yep, outside of what Kevin had done this last, the other item's the same. Did have our partners for four of ours, just a Christmas social, so, but that's not official or whatever. That's it? Yep.
All right, thank you, Commissioner. And other than the few things that were already mentioned, I would just extend the budget hearing. Thank you to Bob for the presentation. It was a very good presentation. Unfortunately, we don't get very many citizens to come to that, which, to be honest with you, I wish we'd get more and get some testimony, but it was a good meeting, and then I thought our employee appreciation event went very well. Thank you to Stephanie and Jesse for the efforts they put into that. We had a pretty good crowd, I thought. Had a nice visit, had some retired folks come back and see us, so it was nice to see some of the past commissioners and the administrator. And other than that, I did have some ditch stuff with a joint lasso ditch that we had a redetermination of benefits done on, and we had a great discussion on the benefits that came up for that. H2O is not our normal viewers that did that one, and they are a little different presentation, but they did a really nice job. And we had only two landowners there, and one had some serious concerns about the, he's on the other side of the lake, so the people from H2O were going to get together with him and look at that property. And then, last night, I had our MVAC meeting, which the highlight of that was the COVID stuff with the different department heads, and things are going good there other than that. So, that brings me to my end of my report. So, that is all of our business for this year. Next year, we'll be honored to have a new chair, Mr. Mark People. And with that, everyone have a great Christmas and a happy new year, and I will look for a motion to recess to the Eagle's Nest at 11:15.
So moved.
Got a motion of a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, the motion carries. Thank you, everyone.
Man, I tell you.